Your audio hadn't picked up yet. Hold on, it will. There's always a lag. I don't hear you yet. Now you are.
Audio, okay. Yeah, how we, how we doing now?
Much better. I can hear you now.
Yeah, it was my fault. I had to join you with audio.
Hey, uh, is there, is that window behind you? Does it have any way to, uh, close the blinds?
Yeah, we have blinds. Yeah, 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 we can close the blinds.
Blinding your face. And we want to see your pretty face.
Not such a bad thing, if you ask me. All right.
Oh, perfect. How you doing, dude?
Busy, but doing well. How about you?
Good, good. We are. You know, it's weird, like, it's hard to not have some presence in an office when mail and FedEx and UPS are running. You know, sort of a strange position like people that get legal service of documents are in.
Right, yeah, I mean, um, you know, it's, it's all across the justice system. You know, just very, uh, I know our people are doing process serving and all that kind of stuff, so it's, uh, it's a weird time. It's, uh, we're trying to readjust everybody.
Okay, Tommy, here's what I'm gonna, you got any questions before we start?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I don't know if you're gonna hear it or not, but I'm gonna start the audio recording and then I'm gonna run a little, uh, intro. I don't know if you listened to one of the episodes, just got a little intro.
Okay, go for it.
Get straight into it, okay?
Great.
Hello and bienvenidos San Antonio. Welcome to the Alamo Hour, discussing the people, places, and passion that make our city. My name is Justin Hill, a local attorney, a proud San Antonioan, and keeper of chickens and bees. On the Alamo Hour, you'll get to hear from the people that make San Antonio great and unique and the best-kept secret in Texas. We're glad that you're here. Okay, welcome. Today's guest on the Alamo Hour for episode eight is Precinct Four Commissioner Tommy Calvert. Tommy, thank you for being here.
Super to be on with you. Congratulations on your show.
Thank you, and this is our first Zoom, so hopefully it goes well.
We're trying to move everybody into the new century here.
All right, Tommy's been representing Precinct Four since 2014. He's in his second term. Uh, he's been involved in lots of stuff, including international policy, anti-slavery issues. He was recently named top forty under forty by the San Antonio Business Journal. And in my opinion, I think the most impressive thing about you, Tommy, is your sort of retail politics. What you're doing for your actual constituents is something you don't see political leaders do enough of, and I mean, hats off to you, man. Seriously, you do such a good job, so I just want you to, a lot of people.
I couldn't have done it without my father's teaching. He, he deserves the credit.
Well, hopefully he'll listen to this.
I'm sure he will.
We have Tommy on here today to talk about a few things. See, these are one of the things that I don't know how to do. Are you hearing that, Tommy?
I did hear that.
I don't.
It was like a light bulb. It was probably my father saying, you know, thank you, right?
I don't, you know, we might just be dealing with that some today, since this is Zoom and I don't know how to turn off that stuff. Um, we have Tommy on here today to talk about a few things. I mean, the, the elephant in the room is the, your work and the county's work as it relates to this pandemic response. I want to talk to you a little bit about a few things. We're gonna talk about the response, the science, the expectations of, of people in San Antonio. What resources are available? And then, you know, not gloom and doom, I want to talk to you a little bit about what's next for the county and San Antonio moving forward, because this isn't a forever thing, but this is a really tragic, heavy, bad thing right now. All right?
Sure, I'm ready whenever you're ready. I'm, yeah.
All right, we've been doing this with everybody who comes on the show so far, is talking a little bit about kind of a top ten, a little color commentary, and I've changed it for you a little bit, because I really, you know, you're, you're in a different position. How are you spending your time decompressing right now?
There's not a lot of time to decompress, because we have an emergency, so I'm like a general in a war zone, and it's a seven-day-a-week, uh, and it's, uh, uh, first thing, you know, five AM to, you know, midnight kind of, uh, hours for us right now. And so I will get to work out maybe two or three times a week. I'll decompress that way. Uh, we have, uh, you know, just family, we might have a couple tequila shots and some beer on Friday, Saturday night, and, uh, just, uh, decompress as best as you can. That's not a lot, you know, I've been to, I've been to a park and walked and, uh, and so I gotta, you know, a five-mile walk in one day, but that's about, that's about it. I can't think, I mean, everything's closed, so I mean, a decompression might be a drive to the store out of the house, you know, because if you're in the house so much, maybe a drive to the courthouse office or something like that's a way to get my mind off of things, or dropping things off.
Enough, no matter what, not enough of it.
No, I mean, no, I, you know, I've, I've read a little bit of the Bible from time to time. I'll, I'll read Exodus, and it's, uh, it is Passover today, and, uh, so I'll, I'll read a little bit tonight. We'll have a Passover Seder tonight at my house, so.
Who will be there? Family?
Uh, yeah, family, and then, uh, my, my Jewish brother, Aaron Chason, will, uh, Cohen, he's a, he's a Cohen, so that's the high priest class of the Jewish faith. He will lead it, and, uh, his girlfriend will be here and, uh, and some other friends, so we will, we'll have a Seder tonight, and, uh, I'm looking forward to it. I found out in my ancestry dot, uh, dot com, I'm one percent Jewish, so I, I've, I've.
Fair enough.
Rabbi Block let me in the services, and I'm loving it.
All right, um, that's gonna go to my last question, but we're not gonna skip ahead. Are you listening to any, you're driving all around the county. I've watched your, your social media and your YouTube videos. Any go-to music or podcasts you've been following?
Well, you know, right now, it's, it's really all news all the time, because every hour is very different, so, uh, you know, I'm listening to a lot of news, whether it's NPR, CNN, MSNBC, ABC, uh, local news, and then, um, you know, I just, I've done a couple of music videos because of my radio station KROV, but I have never collaborated with Drake until several hours ago, and so I was in, uh, Jose Hoffman from El Tipico Mexican Restaurant. He had a videographer make a music video of us giving away enchilada platters to God's Plan in Drake, so I, I've been listening to Drake's God's Plan lately.
Did Drake give you the license for this, or you're just hoping?
Look, lawyer, stop your nonsense. He gave away seven hundred and fifty enchilada plates, so that's a good deed, and he said he doesn't have it, and I don't condone it. Don't sue me, Drake.
Okay.
Tony Records, whoever.
Maybe that answers the next question. You had a whole video on YouTube about ordering local, buying local, help support local. What are some of the restaurants and businesses, there you go, that you, you have been going to, and, and, oh, I'm gonna get it wrong, I saw it, but I can't remember.
This is Texacola, this is Southside Craft Soda. Uh, Brother Agion really kind of lit a fire under my rear end, and so, you know, I, uh, you know, of course, reached out to, you know, our mutual friend, Jody Newman, and Steve, just to see, do they have any of their restaurants open, uh, in King William? There aren't a whole lot, and you can always go to the Grub Hubs, things like that, to figure out what's open, so I went down to Tito's Mexican Restaurant. Just, yeah, I've been just trying to spread the love, uh, as many places as I can, and, uh, but really, you know, for my own health and, 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 and just, uh, because I am in such a, a busy schedule where I don't necessarily have time to, uh, go out a lot of places. I've actually been cooking a lot here at the house and, uh, and meal prepping, so, um, so we've been doing a lot of that.
We had a group called Catalina Produce who dropped off, I mean, it had to be ten or fifteen pounds of produce, I mean, delivery and everything.
Yeah, good stuff.
I mean, it was great.
Yeah, there's a lot of great options for folks, and we're, you know, you've got everything from American Express with the small business, uh, centers that they offer online, and we're putting some lists together on Bear County, thanks to, uh, uh, Brother Agion from Southside Craft Soda, raising the awareness. I'm trying to get our county institutions to do things like purchase his soda, whether it's a university health system. We're, we're not really operating our cafeteria very much at the, uh, courthouse right now because of the, uh, you know, the real decline in the way the courts are operating, and just, there's not a lot of people, really. A lot of us are working from home, but we're, we're doing what we can.
We, uh, we're doing the same thing at my house and, and doing the best, but it's kind of a weird mix of, you don't want too mu- too much interaction, but at the same time, you want to support, so we're kind of doing that every other day. We're cooking, every other day we're ordering.
If we're keeping it real, that's what's going on.
What is your precinct? You explained it to me one time, and it's gigantic. Just give us a general geographic location.
Well, it's God's country, and, uh, we represent, uh, all the great things that really make up Texas. My, my precinct is bigger than ma- major cities like Milwaukee. It has a half a million people in it. It's downtown in the Alamo. It's, it goes west to Tinnan Hill to Bran by Chris Madrid. It's, uh, southeast Brook City Base and Pecan Valley and Elmendorf and beyond, as if you're going into the Eagle Ford Shellbound thirty-seven. It's the east side and going all the way down IH-ten, as if you're going to Houston. It's the northeast side, so it's Parambitl and, uh, Lookout Road and Selma, Universal City, Live Oak, Shirts, uh, Windcrest, Converse, Kirby. Uh, you, you know, all of those northeast cities, about twelve cities, uh, half a million folks, and it's the most diverse precinct, so we have, you know, like I said, the Pearl, and we have great poverty, um, and, uh, and great, um, opportunity as well. Of course, the new challenges of the economy coming out, uh, you know, I'm not sure everybody is truly pivoted to, uh, the before coronavirus and after cor- coronavirus, uh, uh, understanding yet, but I, I don't think this is gonna be gone, uh, any short of two years. Um, we, the president's own, uh, memos indicate it's an eighteen-month, uh, situation, and, and most scientists and people who deal in disease, infectious disease, recognize that, uh, the virus will probably come back in the fall again, and, um, and so we really, um, we, we really, and it could come back worse than it is now. That's what, that's what the flu and things like, like, like that do. They actually come back a second cycle after their first cycle even worse. And we have to remember that this particular disease has mutated like, I don't know, eight or nine times, right? So even if, yeah, even if we get a vaccine, uh, it may mutate in, in the time that, uh, that the vaccine is created, and then, once you gets, get the vaccine, think about how long it'll take the world to actually receive it. I mean, it'll take years, so, um, this is a life changer. We're in a disaster economy, and we're in it, uh, for, for years, because as, as a guy with economics background, there's not a lot that government can do, uh, other than maintain basic bills, right? Just basically pay people's m- minimum sustenance, right? Because normally, when you have stimulus and things like that, you know, you can, you can stimulate the economy, but if you literally can't get out because of the health issue of the disease to work, I mean, you know, the only thing with the government, the federal government, can do is to print money, like only, it can do states and local, uh, local entities cannot print their own money, and, um, help, you know, just maintain of, I would call it a, you know, a reset. It's a flat-line kind of, uh, economy. So not cheery news, but I think.
Point, even if there's a million jobs, a million healthy people can't work them because you can't get out of your house.
Well, and it's worldwide.
Yeah.
So it's world, it's, it's all over the world.
Okay, so I'm, we're gonna get into this a little more in-depth, but I wanted to have you run through real quick. You've been appointed co-chair of the Social Services COVID-19 Community Action Working Group, which is apparently, it looks like a mix of city and county elected officials, some, um, citizens, but it's a pretty high-powered group of people. What is the, um, what is the role of the Community Action Working Group?
So there's actually more community citizens on it. It's just elected officials are chairing it, except the philanthropy committee, and so social services in particular is really, I kind of think, the front line of what we have to deal with. We, we can, it's a broad enough subject matter, you know, talking about nonprofit social services, that we can dabble into what we want, but there are other committees that are dealing with the frontline issue, which is food security or food insecurity. And, uh, let me tell you, there is a huge amount of food insecurity in San Antonio. If you look at the statistics in Texas, San Antonio, the six major cities, actually is going to receive the most stimulus checks, the most qualified people because of the big cities. I mean, not, not in terms of, um, raw number, but per capita, uh, because the wages are higher in other cities around the state. Our wages, you know, you, you can't make more than, I think, one fifty or one forty or something like that. And so we're gonna receive a lot of those, uh, checks, and people are living paycheck, paycheck to paycheck, and if we're at ten percent unemployment now, by the time this quote-unquote clears up for a short term in late June, mid-July, we'll probably be at thirty percent unemployment at that point, so we'll be in depression era, uh, times, and so the Social Service Committee is looking at everything from how do we get senior citizens who cannot go to a food bank distribution, who are not on a meals-on-wills list, how do we make sure that they're, uh, taken care of in the variety of needs, uh, dealing with staying aware of information, because they may not be technologically savvy. You know, family are told you can't go visit them, or else you might make them sick. I mean, it's some very complicated issues. How we deal with, uh, domestic violence, runaways, because you, you're getting, you and I are both getting Amber Alerts on our phones with children abducted, right?
Morning, yeah.
Exactly, got one, we all got it. And that, when domestic, when people have to stay in domestic situations that they don't want to be in, obviously, those situations happen, so domestic violence is probably gonna increase thirty percent. What that means is human trafficking is going to increase thirty percent, because uh, people run away from the domestic situations, and they become poached by pimps and traffickers. The organized crime networks want to focus on trafficking, because they can't get some of the supplies across the border because of the closing of the, of the transportation routes, right? So they're gonna, they're gonna start getting into selling of commercial sex exploitation, and so, um, we're looking at everything from the fact that the schoolchildren in, in the city don't have access to internet, uh, and, and are, we have areas in shirts, quite frankly, that don't have internet. I have large parts of my precinct that are rural in the east-central area and beyond, that don't have, uh, good internet connection. They're basically using satellite stuff, and it's very slow, uh, and how do you communicate with your teacher? If you're poor, don't have internet, all those kinds of things, uh, are really major obstacles, and what happens to the kids long-term when they don't really have the interaction with the teacher? And, and, you know, do, do schools need to be year-rounds? I think they do at this point. The, you know, one of the superintendents told me, well, we can't make school year-round, because, uh, people have vacations planned, and I'm thinking, I don't think he understands, a lot of hotels are gonna die, a lot of air routes are not gonna be available. You know, is not gonna be a lot of vacationing. Uh, people are still gonna be concerned about their health in getting on a plane, which is a, almost a sentence to get COVID-19 right now, and, and we're told not to, so it's gonna take a little while before all that gets back into, to motion, where our plane routes have been cut in half in San Antonio.
Yeah.
So, um, we're looking at, um, how do we use CPS Energy's dark fiber, fiber they're not using, to be hooked up, uh, so that we have internet, you know, because we probably have, I looked at, I'm a dork that looks at spatial maps, right? So, uh, I looked at the spatial map of forty of the largest cities in the United States, and San Antonio had the lowest internet usage. In the east, south, and west sides, twen- only twenty-five percent to forty percent of the households had internet. North side's eighty, ninety, a hundred percent of the census tracts have it, uh, so we have a huge digital divide that's gonna be a problem in a world where people are going on Zoom and all this other digital stuff. There's tremendous issues before the Social Service Committee. We're prioritizing those, but at the same time, this is very important. What I'm encouraging our committee to do is, we can't let the other nonprofits die, right? Like, just because we prioritize in the stimulus funding, the people feeding and sheltering people have to go first, doesn't mean that with the increased capacity to feed, while volunteers are down to the food bank, because people are concerned about their health, and that, because there are a lot of seniors who volunteer at the food bank, and that's understandable, they should be concerned. Why not use the workers from those other nonprofits to help and hire them from the stimulus funds to serve food, or to help with the epidemiological, uh, fight, or the hotlines, when you want to call in and you want to get an appointment for, for a test and the line is busy? Why not hire more people from the other nonprofits to man those lines, or the food service workers to take the food to the senior citizens as a job from the stimulus? So what I'm trying to get people to understand is, it's like a war, and when we went through World War Two, the men went to war, and the women got into the manufacturing, and they made the airplanes and the bombs and everything, and that's what we're really not, uh, I, I just don't hear a lot of that thinking from the president, even to our local elected, and that's really what we need to do.
Um, you, you hit on a point that I really, I never thought about, but the digital divide now becomes a debate of, you know, forever, it was honestly couched in, oh, that's a luxury, but now it's a necessity. I mean, now you're depriving people of education, the same people that a lot of people rolled their eyes when they say there's a digital divide, this part of town can't, you know, get on the internet, and people are thinking, oh, okay, you can't search Google. Well, now they can't get an education, so it's a really, I mean, it's a really good point. When you talk about the dark lines from CPS, is that capacity that, that is there, but just not hooked up, or it would be, you need to create capacity?
Yeah, so they have the capacity to do it everywhere. What they claim they don't have is the ability to do the last, uh, the last little connection part, and, um, so we're gonna find out, what does that cost? Do we need to ask for it in the stimulus, or is there a private partnership that could be put together to make that happen? So it's there, it's sitting there, it's latent, and, um, you know, someone from the city told me, uh, well, uh, we're giving out these, uh, mobile hotspots, and I said to them, do you think the manufacturer of mobile hotspots expected to have mobile hotspots for every school child in Bear County, produced and manufactured? And by the way, the rest of the country, because they all have the same problem? I don't think so, so you better think of a different idea than a mobile hotspot.
Tommy, what are you doing to stay safe? You're out, you're out and about. I mean, I've seen it. Um, what are the, what are the precautions you're taking to make sure that?
So probably four or five weeks ago, uh, well, actually, starting almost February first, I began to prepare my staff for what was to come. That February first was the date in which I was first told, and about ten o'clock at night on a Saturday night, we were gonna be receiving folks off the ship for coronavirus. So I began to, uh, get food in order. We, we have a lot of medicine, um, that, you know, we have probably about six thousand dollars in medicine, masks, food, gloves, and I got way before everybody realized this was serious, because I worked in disasters and war zones, as you said, uh, in my earlier introduction, I knew this was coming. The second thing is, I stopped, uh, basically meeting one-on-one and, and with people almost five weeks ago. Uh, I stopped my in-person meetings, because I do two, two thousand to three thousand meetings a year, and I, I'm very susceptible to, uh, getting, uh, impacted. I wear a mask, I wear gloves, even at the store. I've been doing that before, uh, it was advised to do that, uh, probably a month ago, uh, I had advisors that told me that's what's gonna happen, and that's what we need to start doing, so I started doing that pretty early. I, I, I bought Airborne many weeks ago, many months ago now, uh, and so I take a multivitamin Optimen, I take, uh, Airborne, I take, uh, my glucosamine, I take my, uh, Temerik, I take, uh, my blood pressure med- I take all kinds of stuff, and, uh, just make sure that my nutrient load is good, and of course, I said I, I have a balance between eating out, where I potentially expose myself, and, uh, most meals are probably in. Although I really want some enchilada.
Yeah, I had tacos yesterday, and they were fantastic, so. From Meadow, I'd never been there. I'd never even heard of it either.
Meadow, where's that?
It's, uh, Artisan's Alley, I think, off of Bitter, but they deliver anything within seven miles, so.
Well, it's precinct three, and I, you know, I, I, I only stay in God's country.
All right, all right. I'm right outside of yours. Um, so keeping your immune system up, gloves, mask, washing your hands.
Yeah, washing.
Are, are we, as a county, re- recommending masks at this point?
Yeah, um, uh, yeah, I, you know, uh, we, we just, this week, decided to go ahead and follow suit with, uh, that recommendation.
Okay. Tommy, you were born and raised here, right, in San Antonio?
Yes, I was, and, uh, the southeast part of my precinct off of WW White and Martin Luther King in, uh, right where Freedom Bridge is, where the march starts every year. That's where I was born, and then I was raised between West French and Alta Vista, the northeast side off of Parambitl, and the east side off of Yum.
All over.
I was. I'm a, I'm a homeboy all over my precinct. That's what got me elected. I mean, I would go over into Windcrest, I'd be like, I used to do my music lessons at Dakbert Music. People were like, oh, this is a homeboy. He remembers Dakbert Music.
You know Leon Dakbert?
I don't know, I didn't know, I was a kid, I didn't know Leon.
That's, uh, Alex Vigam's brother-in-law is Leon Dakbert. His, was the one that had that music store. I never, anybody else knew it, except for Leon had told me about that.
Well, I went to school with, I think I've told you, I went to school with, with Alex, so we, and his sister was in my class.
Yeah.
The law guns.
Wait, that, that's a different story. Um, okay, last question on sort of this random question list. What is, what is your two go-to sources for information on COVID and what's going on? What are your top sources?
So I, I look at the World Health Organization, I look at the CDC, um, I, I look at, uh, Dr. Bergen's work, uh, the other epidemiologist, Allegrini, um, of course, uh, mainstream news sources, uh, your ABC and CBS, NBC, CNN, MSNBC. Yeah, those are just some of them, and then, and then, you know, a lot of people send me Medium, but I don't, I don't read Medium, but they'll send me a Medium, and sometimes those long form are good, and then, uh, most times, I'm always reading with a critical eye. If I don't know the source, it's not, it's not a good source that I'm used to, then I'm gonna have a little bit of a critical eye to it. And so, of course, it's, it's editorial and commentary from people who contribute, and so, you know, sometimes I glean some good things, and sometimes I can, I write back the person who sent me that long article, and I say, well, I think they're right about this, and they're wrong about this, I think this is their agenda, and this is why, and things like that. So that was one of the things, when we went, when I was in the orientation as a freshman in college at the library, the librarian said, you must know how to decipher between good information, and that's very important in, in leaders making calls. It's not that you know everything, but it's, um, what do you do when you're given bad information, and how do you get good information? You need to know how to get good information.
Except for on Medium, when it comes to Dr. Aurora Allegrini, who's been a guest on the show, her stuff is impeccable.
It's solid, yeah, it's, it's, it's solid, it is, yeah. I don't have any disagreements with anything she's ever written.
I, I want to walk through this a little bit with you. I mean, we're, we're an hour-long show, we've got forty minutes left, so we're gonna kind of let it go where it goes, but you were one of the first sort of movers and voices for this community on COVID-19, especially whenever they started bringing people to San Antonio. I was sitting there, and let me tell you my reaction. First, this has to be military-related, I guess, because it's going to Lackland, and then, why is this ending up in university or Methodist? I can't remember where they went, instead of military hospitals. Why was San Antonio used as sort of a waystation, a stop point for people being brought back into the country with COVID? And why were our, um, county and city and local facilities sort of the go-to stop for their medical care? What, has there been discussion with the feds? Have they explained to y'all what they were thinking or what they were doing?
Do you drink whiskey? I'll tell you the real answer for whiskey. All right, anyway, let's get back to the political answer.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know. Uh, I felt that the way it was set up was a mistake. I said so, um, behind the scenes before the public knows it. I, um, like I said, I fir- I, I was watching Saturday Night Live, and it, it came across my email from the CEO of the University Health System, or Kyle Coleman, or Emergency Services Director, I can't remember which one, that we were gonna be receiving folks from the ship, and, and I said, hey, I want to make sure that they're not going to University Health System, uh, with coronavirus, and, um, they, I was told, uh, that the CDC said they would go to, uh, Houston, the Galveston, the medical, uh, UT Medical, uh, out in Galveston, and I said, okay, that's fine. I, and I can't hear you. Were you saying something?
Oh, it's UTMB in Galveston.
Yeah, that's it, thank you. UTMB, that's right, and so I said, okay, that, that works for me, um, and, um, although I, I, I was uncomfortable with it coming to Lackland, and, um, so that turned out to be a lie. And I think structurally, uh, the administration set this the absolute worst way that it could ever set it up, unless it had some ulterior motive for how it set it up. And, uh, and that is, normally, in a public health or any kind of emergency, your local, uh, county commissioners are in charge of emergency management and homeland security, but because it's on a federal military base, that is not possible. And so, uh, as an honorary civilian commander of the four-hundred-and-thirty-third, uh, air wing of the United States Air Force, and honorary civilian commander of the twelfth Flying Wing of the United States Air Force, I know that the hospital at Lackland is set up for infectious disease. But the administration chose not to have, uh, that infectious disease hospital, uh, at Lackland utilized for these folks, and instead began to reneg on its promises, send them to, um, UTMB, and, uh, began to put them into our hospitals. First, on the northwest side, uh, there was a rotation, the first was Methodist, uh, Texan, the second, uh, was Baptist downtown in my precinct. The third, uh, was Christus downtown, just adjacent to my precinct line, and the fourth was University Health System. That, that was the rotation, that remains.
Why are they rotating them?
For capacity sake, uh.
One at a.
I'm sorry?
One at a time? They were rotating them for capacity sake? Seems like a way to spill it.
No, it was i- in the event that they got ill at, from the dorms in Lackland, that was who would take. Uh, it, we always have a coordinating committee of hospital beds called STRAC that coordinates, for example, our, what we call our frequent flyers. People who may be mentally ill or chronically sick and call nine-one-one a lot, we, we need to know, like, who has the. We, we need to know like who has the open beds, like you, you know, even if, so we coordinate beds. And so this was a, an agreement amongst the, the, the health systems. And then they were moved into the Texas Center for Infectious Disease, which I told them early on that they should do first. And they instead added in the hospitals. And then of course, the rest became history. I said in the Revard Report, it was a mistake. University Health System medical employees get hit, have to be quarantined. You know, and, and I got the XenX robots involved because of the way the pathogen is so sticky, if you will, on different surfaces. It was very important to me that, that we, we really hit the pathogen hard because human beings miss 50 to 60% of the cleaning. Because you know, you don't necessarily clean on papers. How can you clean a paper other than with a UV light? Right? And so I was able to get $2 million in robots from you, from XenX robots. And none of the hospital, they all, this hospitals, the county, everybody sat on it. Nobody used it. And you know what happened? Those robots became used in Italy, in Korea, in Japan. And we had to use loner robots when it hit our system because nobody in the leadership thought we were going to have a problem. Now we have 500 cases beginning our rise. Okay? The months of April and May are going to be very high months. I can tell you last week, on Monday, there were 150 cases. A week later, there were 450 cases. I look back at my congressional town hearing. So just look at what increases we're having week by week. By, by the time Monday hits, you look at the number from this past Monday to next Monday, it's, it's been a real problem. I don't think I answered your full question.
Well, you know, it's going to go where it goes. How, how much of that increase do you think is just an increase in that we actually contest more people now?
Well, certainly, you know, confirmations are going to go up. But if you look at the fact that we've only tested nationwide, 0.6% of the population.
Sure.
When South Korea was able, this is where I, this is where I measure leadership instead of, I think they should change the bar graphs. They have these bar graphs where it shows like number tested per capita. And what I would do is actually change it to the head of state for those countries and look at it as a leadership failure. Because you will see we are dead last. Japan is second. And I believe the Netherlands was third. We're dead last.
Second to last?
In testing. Yeah.
Okay.
And so this is why this thing is burning out of control. The only reason it's not gotten worse is the social distancing and the people, you know, just, I think, doing a pretty fair job. Some better than others.
Hey, what happened to the robots you had donated?
They, like I said, the $2 million worth of robots were sold around the world because those communities.
Were loners.
So we use loan, yeah, because the way it's like a loner car, they'll, for these robots, they're $100,000 each. And so if you buy one, they have a loner for you. In case yours breaks, they'll send you your loner. So we were using other people's loners around the world. And it's a shame because, you know, this is when I talk about transitioning into a disaster economy. What I had said is that incentives should be given to companies like XenX or companies that are doing personal protective equipment to expedite their manufacturing and increase their manufacturing locally. Because in the future, supply chains are going to be down. We're not going to be, I mean, we're making 3D masks for personal protective gear for healthcare workers. Right here, we don't have to manufacture it out of any other country. We're making ventilators that can open our labs that we don't have to have manufactured in China. And that's a good thing because, because the, the actual need when you have shipping restrictions or air restrictions or all those kinds of restrictions is immediate.
I want to, just from my personal edification, is XenX locally based? I mean, what was the?
It was created by one of the founders of Rexface.
Okay. And also just explain real quick, because you're going to talk about university and we're probably going to talk about it. The university and the county has a special relationship with the university hospital because in Bear County, university healthcare system and university hospital are the county hospital, fair?
Right. It's Bear County Hospital District.
And does that mean the county puts money into the hospital?
That means it is the counties. I approve their budget. I approve their board. So I appoint member to represent me to help administrate it. And so county commissioners, in addition to being in charge of homeland security emergencies, we're in charge of the public health system and the mental healthcare system as an arm of state.
Yeah, I think a lot of people probably don't know that university is actually funded and directed.
Bear County Hospital District, which we went to a vote in 1948 to create.
Okay. All right. Let's talk about the next thing. I, you know, I talked to you beforehand about sort of who's given the guidance to the county and sort of how y'all are working through the science. You know, pull the robe back a little bit and let, you know, our listeners understand how is the county approaching this? Are y'all just listening to the CDC? Or do y'all have a science group and some set of advisors who are advising us specifically based on how Bear County is responding and Bear County is reacting?
Well, there are very little advisors giving advice on science to the court. In the emergency, the court has given power solely to the county judge and at the city solely to the mayor. We brought in a consultant who I kind of look at as our, our czar, Dr. Bergen. But she's only attended one meeting and spoken briefly. She doesn't regularly advise us. I suppose that we can ask for her assistance. I have been putting together my own kitchen cabinet and, and going out into the private sector for additional consultation. I am fortunate that I actually studied epidemiology in college and I studied global health and the environment through civil engineering department at Tufts University in France. And so I, I have some, I mean, a very small amount of background in the process and the, the thinking around epidemiology that gives me some slight more guidance than most elected officials probably.
Where are leaders getting most of their guidance from then? I mean, everybody can't be putting together their own working group and, and a kitchen cabinet. I mean, is there any centralized group?
Not that I'm aware of. I, I, you know, those are the things that I think, you know, that, that all elected officials need. It's a, it's been a, I'm scrunching my brow and, and closing my eyes because it's really hard to fathom why things are as disjointed in the information sharing as they are in what is probably the greatest crisis the country has faced since the Civil War.
Definitely, definitely the greatest in our lifetime. I mean, no question about that.
The greatest of our lifetime, I'm pretty sure.
And let's talk about that a little bit. I want to kind of backtrack. You said that in emergency situations, the mayor has been given the authority on behalf of.
In our case, the county judge, and we supersede the mayor. So we, so you remember when Ebola hit Dallas? It wasn't the mayor of Dallas in charge. It was the county judge. Our county judge has chosen not to take the power that he could, which is to supersede the mayor. He's working in collaboration and mirroring the mayor. I think the mayor is in some ways led a little bit more on some of the restriction.
But this is, but this is a government code thing, right? I mean, it's set up. It says in these scenarios, if the governor says X, then here's who gets the power.
Well, if the commissioners court and the council yielded, yes, the governor and all that kind of said, yeah.
Okay. In emergency situations, here's how we're delegating power.
Right. But we do have the ability as commissioners and council to modify the emergency orders. And I think we have to look critically sometimes at those. Just to make sure that the emergency orders are being administered the way that we need them to be.
Which is what's happening in Dallas County right now, right? There's a, the commissioners court and the, and the county judge, they just had a very public spat over powers under the emergency powers and who's going to do what now?
I didn't hear that. I'll have to look into that.
Yeah, the commissioners court voted to take a lot of those powers away from County Judge Jenkins up there.
Okay, I have to take a look at it.
Okay. So let's talk, give us a rundown on how the county is doing. Everybody who watches any news sources hearing, you know, we're running out of everything. How are we doing in Bear County right now? And are there any projections or tests to when these will start becoming problems?
So you, you're, you're, our Zoom connection broke up. I think you're, you said something about we're running out of things. And is there any forecast about when there'll be problems?
Well, so I'm trying to say, how are we doing on resources now from PPE to beds to ventilators? And is there a projection of when we think that may become problematic?
Hardly in terms of essential workers. I'm surprised that there hasn't been more of a public appeal for personal protective equipment. You know, just today, I brought the issue up with the elected officials call on the county manager because my constables, we were doing the enchilada platter getaway giveaway. And I said to the constable, I said, do you have enough PPE? He said, no, we have a little bit. We don't have enough. And yes, there has to be a hierarchy and priority, but I couldn't get a number as to, all right, county manager's office. What is the total that we need for our people? How much do we have? And how much have we ordered? And I recognize we didn't plan in our budget to have to order a bunch of PPE for government officials across, you know, the county clerk's office and the district clerk's office and the sheriff's department. We didn't, we didn't account for that in the budget. So just shoot straight with me. They couldn't shoot straight with me. They, they couldn't give me a number. I mean, and it's okay that they couldn't give it to me on the fly because I didn't prepare it to them, for, prepare them for that question. But I have a feeling they may not really know. I have a feeling they have made a projection based upon prioritization. And yes, there has to be prioritization, but at the same time, we need to know exactly how short we are. We're, we're short. And, you know, I had the CEO of STRAC come to, to my court and say, we look good. And then the next week I have doctors and nurses calling me and their spouses calling me saying, we're almost out of personal protective equipment. So I go get the 3D printer donations and I get any ISD and other school districts to use their 3D printers to make personal protective gear for the private hospitals. Okay? You know, two, three Sundays ago, I've been asking for data about our ICU, our manned and our nursed ICU. Cause there's one thing to have ICU beds. It's another thing to have them manned by people. Okay? And, and then I asked about our ventilators and things of that nature. They couldn't, they avoided the question. They avoided the questions. And then finally, the public health authority, Dr. Wu said, oh, we just started keeping it a couple Sundays ago. So we just started getting our projections together. And now the projections say that our apex will be sometime between the last week of April and the first part of May. Or it could be mid-May. Or it could, I mean, so we really, we really are just starting to get our extrapolation. So we may flatten the curve enough to ride out because of the public distancing. I hope, I hope my, my cries in my, I mean, there's no joy in getting on people's rear end about this. I don't, I, I'm just trying to look out for human life. That's all I'm trying to do.
Do we have a number on ventilators or is that still kind of an amorphous?
We do have a number on ventilators. Let me, while we're, ask me another question. I'll see if I can find you the exact number.
Have we gotten anywhere close to using the capacity of our ventilators as we sit here today?
Well, I think the question also on ventilators is a question of not just university health system, which tends to be the number of ventilators that give us the most a, as opposed to the whole hospital system. Because if you listen to the doctors and nurses, and we all have friends who are doctors and nurses, how about the daily growth and the movement and the personal protective gear? They're really, they're not people that freak out easily, but just listen to them. They're freaking out. So there's a huge disconnect between the CEOs and the rank file in the emergency rooms and the hospitals from what I, from what I can see in terms of information.
Is there going to be a centralized location where residents of Bear County can look and say, here's our ICU capacity and here's where we're at. Here's our ventilator. Here's where we're at.
Just this week, a couple days, response to an Express News article that they have hit today or coming out tomorrow or Sunday's paper. Very, the, the Express News is extremely critical of San Antonio's information because we get, we've been getting out less information and skewing information in comparison to other cities. So I'll give you an example. You know, we hadn't been giving out the ICU stuff until this week. We, we, we have, in, in the report, there is a under investigation number and the, and the, and the community transmission number, which Houston combines into both. Meaning, meaning they assume that that's COVID-19 until proven otherwise. But we have been, you know, and most cities I think do. But we have been trying to tamp down our numbers and downplaying, downplaying the length of time we're going to be at this is is not good. It's kind of like the mental effect of giving someone false hope when they are diagnosed with cancer. And if you give them too rosy of a scenario and you don't really say, this could be a two-year fight. Then the letdown and the emotional strain of having to go over and over and, you know, then it hits us in the fall and people like, well, I thought you said it was going to go away in the summer.
Right.
When, when we know that the White House is, Dr. Fauci says 18 months, probably coming back in the fall. And I, and why that information isn't getting out from our chief elected officials is very odd to me.
As an elected official, is there anything that the county is putting together an information working group or anything that they are trying to establish to address the lack of information that's coming out?
The fact that I, the fact that I, the fact that I'm going to answer this as I think so is an indication of how bad the information sharing is. Just last night, I'll give you another example. The county judge has a special assistant named Seth Mitchell, who he has brought in and hired to handle most of these inquiries. I had a friend who lost a friend, a, a nurse who, because she was worried that she had COVID-19 and was going to infect her family, she in fact did infect her family. Her son is in a coma. She died. The whole family has it. Her son in the coma, 14 years old, doesn't even know his mother's dead. And I asked, do we have a hotel space or a healthcare workers so that they don't have to go home and infect their families? Like other cities do, like California has it. Okay? The answer was very unclear that I got from the special assistant Seth Mitchell. It, it was the Emergency Operations Command has made a hotel arrangement for this. Well, I want to know what it is. And I want to know what that arrangement is so I can communicate it to my, my, my community. And, you know, part of the reason I want to be able to communicate it is, you know, I happen to represent the African-American community and, and every community, but they are disproportionately affected by this disease because of underlying health conditions. And so if I have, and this is just for anybody in the healthcare industry, we should be putting that out if there are in fact free places. I'm a little skeptical to be honest with you. So, you know, I'm willing to raise money because there are discounted hotel rates, but I don't think a nurse should have to pay for a, a hotel room while they're putting their lives on the line. But that's basically all I know, all that I know that we're doing for them. So in terms of how we're dealing with this, you can, you can kind of sense my frustration. It's not transparent.
Yeah. And I don't feel like there's been a, an effort from the county to reach. I mean, I think San Antonio is full of loving, wonderful people who want to help and I haven't seen an ask. And this is.
That's correct. There is been no ask.
Yeah, I tell them all, ask, what's the need? Ask. I mean, and, and people I think want to help. I mean, we have an Airbnb right now that nobody is in. That could be used and we would be happy to allow people to use it, but.
And guess what? We could probably get a, guess what? We could probably get you a reimbursement out of the stimulus funds or an emergency fund at some later point. Right? Like that would be a, that would be an expense you would think the country would gladly, the federal government would gladly reimburse us for, for you donating that today. You may get some compensation later. I, I don't get it. I do not get it, Justin. It's some weird stuff going on.
I mean, I've had this conversation with multiple people who've been on the show. I, I, I genuinely want to know what can people do to help? And it's just kind of a, do your best. We don't have like.
You and I, you know, you and I right now, we could organize folks in Airbnb. And, and now that you kind of, you kind of put that in my mind, I think we'll do that. We will, we will say and, 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 and say to the congresspeople, hey, this is a good reimbursable expense, you know, that healthcare workers don't go home and reinfect their families.
Right.
This is for the country that they're, they're, they're doing this. And they know they can't rent it out. Everybody knows they can't rent it out right now, but they could, you know, have these folks not make the issue worse.
Right. I mean, mine's in your precinct too. So, you know, just so.
Thanks for investing in God's country.
Yeah. Okay. So you, you touched on this on one of the, you sent me some YouTube videos and I'd seen most. Yeah. Okay. So you, you touched on this on one of the, you sent me some YouTube videos and I'd seen most of them anyway, but I watched all of them like I told you I was going to and you.
Thanks for Facebook stalking me.
Well, you told me I gotta prepare for interviews.
I'm playing, man. I'm kidding.
So I've actually, you know, I'm an attorney in my normal time when I'm not the world's best San Antonio podcaster. But in my normal job, I've had three nurses from the same hospital system in downtown call me and say, we're not allowed to use PPE. We have to ask for it to check it out. And we've been told if we go grab any without getting permission, we'll be fired. And so I've ran the traps on some of these issues and really they have very few legal, um, you know, recall, they have very little legal recourse at this point. By being told they can't use PPE. You said that they should reach out in one of your, um, YouTube videos, that people who were being denied PPE should reach out to a, was that the non-emergency line? Did I hear that correctly?
Um, I, 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 well, I don't recall exactly in the, in the YouTube video with, with that, with respect to that. I have said that questions over the emergency order, folks should reach out to the county judge's office. But I'm going to tell you this, what you just told me is the first time that I have heard that nurses are being told that they cannot use personal protective equipment. I had not heard that. That is outrageous.
Yeah.
That's to me, sounds like national news. I have not heard a hospital system anywhere in this pandemic say, don't use personal protective equipment.
They're rationing it. So they've basically told them, you have to get permission to use it depending on what, what area you're going to be treating somebody. So even though you may be in the ER, you're probably not the person dealing with the, you know, potential COVID. So we're not going to allow it for you. So it was a rationing deal, but they were told there would be consequences if they used it. So it was pretty alarming and I, you know, we've got some employment lawyers involved and all that. And there just doesn't seem to be recourse for these people other than to not go to their job.
I, I, I get crestfallen, crestfallen when I, my heart drops because, um, this is so bad. I mean, Congressman Henry Cuellar pointed out that, uh, Governor Abbott had only released about 25% of the stockpile of masks that he had been given. And said, you need to give it all out. He said, Congressman Cuellar said that some of his, uh, hospital districts in the valley said they only got enough PPE to put in a back of a trunk. You know, we're, we're heading into the apex of our, uh, increasing numbers. And now is the time to get all of that PPE out. There are sources around the world that can sell that. Um, I've had sources in Germany and, you know, you just heard maybe Gavin Newsom. He was able to secure 200,000 pieces of, uh, PPE. And he said, he used the buying power of California in order to do that, and he can supply the Western states. Which was a backhand to President Trump to say, you should have done this for us. Because if we are the fifth largest economy in the world and the United States is the first largest economy in the world, you could have done this like we did this. They had to quietly do that. So, um, I have a hard time understanding why a, uh, private hospital wouldn't, wouldn't use some consideration for the fact that they may be reimbursed and lobby that Congress reimburses them in the stimulus packages. Cause you know, that won't be the last one.
Right.
And get some kind of commitment from the majority leader and the speaker of the house, uh, that, that if they order it from Germany or China or wherever they're coming from, that they can be reimbursed and that they should just do it.
Right. If they can find somewhere to do it. I've got a buddy that runs some medical clinics and he said for N95s, he usually paid 40 to 50 cents per and he's at five and $6 per right now.
Well, it's all, it's all about leverage. This is where our governor could be helpful, like Governor Newsom was helpful. Where they have to use their buying power and be smart about it.
Okay. I want to pivot a little bit because we've got, you know, 10 minutes or so left. Um, you, you had a kind of town hall, but by Skype or, or Zoom and, and Representative Castro, Cuellar, you, Judge Wolf, y'all talked a little bit about the stimulus bill, but at the time it sounded like that was before the stimulus bill had passed.
No, it was, it was after it passed.
Okay. Um, there wasn't really much detailed information about sort of how the SBAs managing this, where people can go to the county have, does the county have any resource? And let me, I, I applied for the PPP. Uh, I'm going through my bank. My bank has a portal. My bank tells me what I need to give them. And it's been a really easy process, um, for the most part. It hasn't.
What do you bank with? Maybe you don't mind me asking?
Texas Capital Bank.
Okay. Just curious, who, who, who's got it easy? Okay.
Yeah. So that's my business bank. Um, it's been pretty easy. I've got a account manager. They've told me what documents I'm going to need. I kind of had a hard time. You know, they're asking for some strange information as what is your average monthly salary or payroll minus people that get paid this much? But you don't know what it means up to that much. So it's sort of strange in that my accountant said, here's what I think the number, my own CPA said, I'm not a hundred percent sure. Here's the number I would use. Is the county providing any through maybe launch or SBA or anything like that? Do we have any, uh, resources for our small business owners up to 500 employees for the PPP, um, that people can turn to?
So first of all, the, the federal government, yes, we do. And I'm going to get to that. But the federal, in a, in a national emergency, and this is a national emergency, not a local emergency or a state emergency, it's a national emergency. The, the local governments cannot bail out the economy because we cannot print enough money. And so the federal government not having administrated the PPP faster, uh, is going to be a problem. And the Small Business Administration, God bless them, is one of the slowest entities in the federal government. So I question whether or not they can truly administrate these, uh, things fast. What they should do is a block grant to the states and allow the states to get that money down into other entities that could process this stuff faster than SBA. They might end up doing that once they, once they fumble through this first one. Um, because the, the Trump administration is just not good at administering. They don't know how to properly administrate. So that being said, we have the, uh, $5.25 million set up from Bear County to the lift fund. Lift fund is also formerly known as Axion Texas. And the lift fund, um, is only for $25,000. Uh, there was a section that was for grants. That's all been utilized. And there was a section for loans. Uh, what I asked for them to do, since every taxpayer in the county was, uh, paying into it, is to make sure each precinct basically had an equal amount of money allocated to it. What I also want is the spirit of things like the Community Reinvestment Act. We need to make sure every ethnicity is also getting a piece of that pie. I'm a little concerned that that's not happening. I've heard a lot of things from African-American businesses that they're not getting the Axion, uh, lift fund rather, the lift fund money. Three of them say they were denied. Now that may just be based upon their criteria, but, um, you know, lack of outreach and those things. So I'll be looking at that very closely, but we, we have those $25,000 loans now, um, from the county. I think payable, oh, you know, over, was it, I just looked at the application. I read the application yesterday. I have a lot of numbers in my head. I'm going to say four years or something like that. I can't, I can't quite remember.
That's, that's the county, that's county money, right?
That's correct.
Do we have any, so if, if I am a, a small business owner and I have no idea where to turn, is there any county resources for people to help them get through the PPP or any of the stimulus package or a podcast or anything where people can go and get additional information? And if not, maybe the county could put something together for the small business owner.
Well, the first line of offense has to be your congresspeople. Uh, your congresspeople can help you literally get through the bureaucracy of the federal government. Uh, the second, uh, obviously is the Treasury Department and your senators. Um, and, um, so, um, we're happy to help with that, but th- those are really, uh, federal funds. And, you know, my oversight ability is great. There is none, right? It's just, it's a congressperson that really is holding them accountable for the proper administration.
Um, and your bank. I mean, that's what I did. I went through my bank and they've kind of told me exactly what to do. So if anybody's listening, call whoever your bank is or whoever you want your bank to be. Um, I, let's, let's sort of change a little bit. There is going to be another side to this. It's very scary. It's very overwhelming. I was talking last night about watching Hoda on the morning show, just lose it. I mean, she just came over, became overwhelmed. I mean, it is overwhelming and you don't know it's overwhelming until it hits you. But there is another side of this. The sun's going to rise. Fiesta's going to happen. We're going to be a great city. We've always been. What are, what are your hopes, um, for your precinct and for this city? And let's not talk about COVID, just generally, what do you see for, for the city? What do you see for the county? What, I mean, you got elected with, with really high vision and, and high ambitious goals for the city. What do you want to accomplish here?
Well, I, I, I hate to, but I do not think we will be back the way we were ever again. I do not. We're facing a complete economic collapse. The flu of 1918 was the fourth version of that flu. And as a history buff, I can tell you that pandemics and wars either precede or, uh, come after. Uh, war, war two or war one, many, many pandemics have always preceded war. And why is that? Because when you become resource short because of the pandemic, you fight other countries over resources. We all see, you know, we may have to start protecting the food bank distribution because people are going to get very, uh, antsy about the food shortages and the food supply that they can come. So, so, so from my perspective, you just have to imagine, what will the world be like if, when the cold months happen, like Dr. Fauci says, the coronavirus comes back? And what if, as the folks, the scientists from Zenix told me, it comes back worse than it did, or if it comes back the same? But let's assume the worst because that's what we have to plan for. Let's assume that that virus begins to re-hit in the cold months, September on the East Coast, October in our part of the country and extends through June of next year. The collapse of businesses will be tremendous. The only real revenue will again come from spending from government to sustain us. Okay? Including local government. Because we're telling people now, don't worry about paying your taxes. We're trying to get rid of the appraisal because, you know, we don't want you getting hit with a January number seven, eight percent appraisal increase. But I also told my fellow electeds on a call today, I said, look, don't just say zero freeze, because if the, if the actual appraisals depreciate, then you need to go with where they depreciate to, because nobody can sell.
Right.
Okay. Because you'll be paying too high of taxes if you just freeze, right? So, um, I think it is a two-year, I think it's a two-year battle and I don't think the world will be the same. It's going to take a long time for us to get back. It's just going to be a different world. Because in part, think about it this way. The technological evolution, when you have the fear of pandemic, the, the restaurant worker is taken, their job is taken by a robot. Because you fear a sneeze in our hamburger. So the restaurant owner says, look, I need to stay open. I need to make revenue. So instead of hiring a person to make the burger, I'm just going to use a machine. And, and what happens to those jobs? The only thing that I've been telling people is you need to, to have the person who's good with their hands, the mechanic, the plumber type, transition them to repair that robot that makes the quarter pound of cheese. Transition the workers to program on, you know, IT jobs and things like that. That's where we have to get people. So I don't see many politicians talking about, even before this pandemic hit, I was talking about, I was kind of on the wing, the wing economic and, because I think Wang was right about the economy. Uh, other than the, the thousand dollars. So I didn't agree with that, but maybe now I do. I don't, but, um.
Plan? Yeah. It was wonderfully ambitious.
I, I was like, I want, I'm going to sign up on your internet and get that thousand dollars on your list. Anyway, but, um, I, I just, I don't know. I, I know, only thing I can tell you is I will be as constructive about solutions in whatever future we have, as I think I've been throughout this Zoom conference call. I will, I will be able to think it through and, um, and provide solutions. But, um, there's so many things we've never thought about. I mean, our kids not having access to their teachers. And what does that do for the criminal justice system? Because one and two people in your Bear County jail is a high school dropout. So what's going to happen if we lose the hard kids who were already on the borderline of truancy going to school anyway? And then they don't get to, the human teacher keep track of them for a year or two. They're lost. They're gone.
Maybe that is the silver lining. Maybe all of a sudden now we, we limit this digital divide that we had. Maybe all of a sudden people realize that we can do more distance education in college. I mean, maybe there is a silver lining on the backside of this that's came from necessity.
The, so I, I do, here is a silver lining. You want me to answer the positive question? What is the positive? The positive is we are in need of a reset as a, as a human race, to be honest with you. We are, we are completely, uh, driven by the wrong things, the love of money. Um, we're not compassionate towards one another. We are very, um, complacent. We're not, um, at least in America, we're complacent. Um, we've got to do a lot of things to restore, uh, humanity, period. And so in as much as humanity and caring for each other is restored, that will be a good thing. The environment is, mother earth is getting a huge.
Relief.
Yeah. I mean, I'm happy about that. But how human beings treat each other in disaster? When I worked in the Sudan, in the war zone, bloodiest civil war in the 20th century, 2.5 million people died there. I would reunite families. Their 10th cousin would take them. It's unheard of in America. We don't do that. Your 10th cousin, who, and you are, and you want to stay in my place. Oh, sorry. Get, I can get you a Greyhound bus back to wherever you came from. We don't do that. But in these environments where people lose things and lose things and lose things, I think we're going to be brought frankly, back to our knees to realize what is our connectivity to each other? What is our brother and sisterhood to each other? Am I my brother's keeper? And it's much better when we are than when we're not.
I agree. Well, thank you for helping us end on a up note. It's, it's scary enough out there as it is that a lot of us just really have to think of something positive. There's got to be something good that comes out of this. And I think it's what gets people through the day, honestly.
Humanity's restoration, but I think humanity is very much under attack. And I think that, uh, it's up to us to, uh, the lessons. Uh, there is always a, a silver lining and there is, uh, beauty in adversity. But it's going to be very painful, I think, but we can get through it. We can get through it, caring for each other. It's going to take all of us to care about each other. I hope that I'm wrong about the bleak, bleak path, but.
Hope you are too.
Yeah, I really do. I really hope I'm wrong, but the best gift I can give people is the gift of vision and insight. So if people prepare themselves, it's like when I went to school in Boston and I knew I was going into the coldest weather I have ever experienced. I had to go in mentally tough. Otherwise I wouldn't have made it through. If I didn't understand it's going to be cold six months, seven months out of the year, I would have been miserable. Someone had just told me, oh, it'll be like Texas in two months. And it, you know, it's not true. So being mentally prepared is very important to, uh, being in a disaster.
Yeah. Uh, Tommy, thank you very much. Sit tight for a second if you don't mind. Tommy and I met, I, I was just thinking it had to be 12 years ago in Costa Rica. So.
Wow, it has been a long time.
I mean, I, it sounds super cool like we were in Costa Rica, but now we both are on a firm trip for the same guy and.
Yeah.
Um, that does it for this episode. Thank you, Tommy, for being here. It's, it's not the most upbeat discussion, but it's a good discussion. Needs to be had and I think people need to hear it. Um, our next episode, um, is to be determined. My guest wishlist continues. Robert Rivard has agreed to come on. So, uh, now it's Coach Pop for two of the spots as well as Jackie Earl Haley.
You do that? You got Coach Pop?
No, it's my wishlist.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay. I was going to say.
Maybe he'd say yes if you asked him.
I'll ask, I'll ask.
All right. That about does it. Hang, hang tight, Tommy, real quick.